It is November 18th, 2020, and I will call the meeting of Mountain View's Environmental Planning Commission to order at 7:03 PM. This meeting will be conducted in accordance with State of California Executive Order N2920 dated March 17th, 2020. All members of the EPC are participating in this meeting by video conference with no physical meeting location. Members of the public wishing to observe the meeting live may do so at mountainview.legistar.com, on YouTube at mountainview.gov/youtube, and on Comcast Channel 26. As noted on the meeting agenda, members of the public may provide oral public comments during the public comment period for an item by signing up at mountainview.gov/epc-speakers. Emails and voicemail messages received by 5:00 PM today were forwarded to the EPC. All votes will be taken by roll call vote. Now I will ask the EPC Clerk, Ms. Haran, to proceed with the roll call.
Commissioner Haymeyer?
Yeah.
Commissioner Lo?
Yeah.
Commissioner Schmeesing?
Here.
Commissioner Yen?
Your Vice Chair Cranston?
Here.
Here Cox?
Here.
Commissioner Kaprilis?
Here.
All right, so it looks like we have a full house tonight. Let's see, I will make an announcement. At this point, a public hearing regarding the Density Bonus Code amendments was noticed for this date, but this night item was not agendized and will not be discussed tonight. Notices of the new date will be sent once the item is rescheduled. So having said that, let's move on to item number three, the minutes. We will be discussing the Environmental Planning Commission meeting minutes of October 21st, 2020. Is there any discussion of the minutes from the commission? So we can raise your hand. Okay, I don't see anybody raising his hand. All right, then let's move on to public comment. Would any member of the public on the line like to provide comment on the minutes? If so, please click the raise hand button in Zoom or press star nine on your phone. Phone users can mute and unmute themselves with star six. The EPC Clerk will start the timer and let you know when your time is up. EPC Clerk Haran, is there anyone wishing to comment on the minutes?
There is not.
All right, then I will make close public comment on this item and move it back to the commission for a motion. Looks like Commissioner Yen has her hand up.
Yes, I just wanted to make note that I believe I was absent on this day. Didn't attend the EPC meeting.
All right. Okay, so is there any commissioner that would like to make a motion? Commissioner Kaprilis?
I move that we accept the minutes from October 21st as noted.
Okay, is there a second? Looks like Commissioner Lo has her hand up?
Yeah, a second.
Okay, then, EPC Clerk Haran, would you please conduct the roll call vote?
Commissioner Haymeyer?
Aye.
Commissioner Lo?
Aye.
Commissioner Schmeesing?
Aye.
Commissioner Yen?
I believe I abstain.
Vice Chair Cranston?
Aye.
Chair Cox?
Aye.
And Commissioner Kaprilis?
Aye.
All right, so that passes 601 with one abstention from Commissioner Yen who was not in attendance. All right, so I'll close item number three and move on to item number four, oral communications from the public. This is the portion of the meeting which is reserved for persons wishing to address the EPC on any matter not on the agenda. Speakers are allowed to speak on any topic for up to three minutes during this section. State law prohibits the commission from acting on any non-agenda items. Would any member of the public on the line like to provide comment on a non-agenda item? If so, please click the raise hand button in Zoom or press star nine on your phone. Phone users can mute and unmute themselves with star six. The EPC Clerk will start the timer and let you know when your time is up. EPC Clerk Haran, are there any members of the public wishing to address us on items not on the agenda?
There are not.
All right. Seeing none, I will close item four and move on to item five, our main item for the evening, a study session on an office and retail development at 365 to 405 San Antonio Road and 2585 to 2595 California Street. But before we move on, Vice Chair Cranston has an announcement.
Yes, thank you Chair Cox. I recuse myself from item 5.1, Office and Retail Development at 365 405 San Antonio Road and 2585 to 2595 California Street due to my ownership of real property within close proximity to the project site. And so I will be dropping off the meeting at this time.
Okay, thank you for that announcement, Vice Chair Cranston, and have a good evening. All right, so, okay, so he's dropped off, and then we will begin then with a staff presentation from Senior Planner Clarissa Burke. Take it away Clarissa.
All right, just giving you a sec to my screen. There we are. Good evening, everybody. Thank you Chair Cox and Commissioners. In today's presentation, I'll be introducing the proposed project at 365 San Antonio Road and outlining key questions for the EPC to answer and provide input. Not sure where that happened. Okay. Are you guys seeing my screen like I am? Without the presentation?
Yes.
Show one more time. All right. We're gonna have to do this like this. Can everyone see that enough?
It's good to me.
All right. Oh, here we are. Let's try one more time. There we go. Sorry about that, everybody. The proposed project is located at the southeast corner of California Street and San Antonio Road and is being called Phase Three of Malone-Geyer's San Antonio Village Projects. The project proposes six floors of office area above one floor of retail space and four levels of underground parking. Malone-Geyer received authorization from council to submit a project with an additional 150,000 square feet of transferred development rights from the Los Altos School District TDR program on this site. The project requires a precise plan amendment to remove the office cap for this area. However, the office area for the overall precise plan would not be exceeded. The specifics are laid out in the staff report. The proposed project seeks to be as compliant as possible with the city's adopted standards. However, some flexibility on certain development standards may be considered to accommodate the increased intensity from the TDR program. When the project received authorization, the council specifically asked it to be brought to a study session to discuss design and other potential issues. This project is therefore being brought to EPC and council early in the planning permit review process. Through the discussion tonight, it's important to note that technical and environmental review is still underway. There are several project design topics outlined in the staff report. I will briefly touch on each of them. The project proposes landscape on either side of the public walkways and lining the outdoor pedestrian areas. While landscape is always encouraged, DRC recommends special consideration be given to how the landscape impacts pedestrian activity, especially right here in this corner. Too many planter boxes can cause the area to be a walkway instead of an inviting plaza, but enough space and distinctive landscape features should be incorporated. The project is predominantly clad in limestone and glass. While simplified material palis are traditional, there should be enough detail and variation to create interest. DRC recommends these two areas be studied to provide more detail to the ground floor area and break up uninterrupted materials in the upper floors. A lot of design consideration was given to the Phase Two development in separating the structures and avoiding a tunnel effect between buildings. The separation between structures is less than what was generally constructed in Phase Two. Due to the TDRs, typical techniques for reducing the massing of upper floors are not possible. The DRC recommends applicants study pushing the ground floor here and pushing it in approximately five feet to create more space for pedestrians. DRC also recommends studying ways to make this back of house area feel more comfortable. This corner is a gateway to the San Antonio area and should be prominent, interesting, and inviting. While the design is on the right track, we recommend studying ways to emphasize the vertical detailing to create prominence and add interest in the ground floor through art-like installation either on the building or in the plaza. This large covered briefway creates a protected area for gathering area for the public. With the standalone retail located right here in the picture within it, it has the potential to be a really unique area. DRC recommends this tall vertical massing in red be removed or minimized to better showcase the area and make it comfortable for pedestrians. DRC also recommends special attention to detailed materials be given in this area. The project proposes underground parking that is shared with the Phase Two development and can only be accessed through the Phase Two parking structure. Staff is generally supportive of a shared parking direction, but like EPC's thoughts on the proposal. Staff request the EPC discuss these two questions regarding DRC and staff recommendations on project design and the shared parking proposal this evening. This concludes staff's presentation. Planning staff and the applicant team are available for questions. The applicant will now give a brief presentation as well. Thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and stop screen sharing.
Which applicant will be providing the presentation?
You can, they're raising their hand. David Harrison will start.
Hello, everybody. Am I able to share my screen? Are you able to give me control?
Is it at the bottom of your screen to the share screen option should be there?
Mine's not showing that.
Erin, did you promote him to a panelist?
I did, but I don't see it showing up there. Okay.
So this is, there we go. Go ahead, David. Great, perfect. Good evening. My name is Dave Geiser. I'm the Managing Director of Malone-Geyer Partners. I manage our design and construction effort portfolio-wide. We're excited to present to you this evening the last phase of the Village at San Antonio. I've been involved with this project since we bought the Sears entire center from the Foyt family back in 2009. Since then, we've completed nearly 300,000 square feet of retail, theater, and restaurant space, 330 residential units above some of that retail, about 403,000 square feet of office space, and of course, 167 room high eccentric hotel. Including that is almost two acres of open space with grass field and wildly successful dog park. We widened the San Antonio Road to complete the much-needed bicycle link between California Community Real. In Phase Two, we added a central plaza to support the office and retail at the center of that project with pop jet fountains, outdoor dining, and gathering space. So now we look to complete the project with the anchor to the much, very busy and well trafficked corner of San Antonio Road in California with the new office and retail building. This is gonna activate, help activate, again, that busy intersection, help anchor our plaza that sees the entrances to the other office buildings as well as the retail on the ground floor and the theater, the chairs of promenade. Since our gatekeeper approval last December, we're doing a much smaller project than what we originally proposed at the request of the City Council. We've been working with planning staff and the Design Review Committee to further refine the project. And with us tonight, you're gonna hear from Genzler Architects, Architect for the Project, Daryl Fulbright and David Harrison, landscape architects who's been the landscape architect since the inception of our Village project, Keith Midamire and Bryce Shabati, our Civil Engineer Somus, David Broche is on the line, and then also from Malone-Geyer, we have Annie Nefar, in-house architect, and also our Leasing Project Manager Brett Christoffelis to answer any questions you might have on the leasing for the center. And so with that, I'll turn that over to David Harrison with Genzler, who will walk you through our project.
Thanks, David. All right, thank you, everybody, for joining us today and letting us present this project. This is the Phase Two of an ongoing master plan at the Village at San Antonio Center. One key point that we wanted to bring up is this significant pedestrian promenade that goes through the entire master plan and all the lobby connections to all the amenities that are associated with that. I think it's pretty important for the overall campus connection to the project. One thing that we wanted to really emphasize is throughout the design process is just to make sure that we're keeping consistent language, consistent massing, and as well as consistent ground floor planning, just to emphasize the design that's already been established. And as you can see here, the scale of the project really fits into the existing surrounding sites. This is a quick ground floor plan. One thing to keep in mind about that, oh, let me back up. So there's a train station just out of view over here, and so that's really critical. The idea of smart growth density, I think, has been a key driver in this area of Mountain View, and I think it's smart to keep that density near the transit line. So then another important thing was to push back some of the glazing along the public realm so that we can bring that activity zone a little bit deeper into the site and have these little outdoor living room spaces for people to be able to hang out and experience and utilize for the public. An important thing to note with the ground floor is, again, you know, all the lobbies being off of the promenade, getting, activating the promenade with office users when they go back and forth between the amenities and to connect with the rest of the office users on the campus, but also providing interior active zones of community commercial which connect to the actual community and the neighborhood surrounding the site that's just outside of San Antonio Center. This is one of the most important corners along California and San Antonio, and it was important to create a big feature element right here at the corner that acts as a gateway to the overall San Antonio Village project. Another important feature is along that open promenade, what we did is we created this two-story portal element that acts as a gateway into the entry to the promenade as well as some protection for the outdoor active spaces below. Here you can see the other side along silicon and promenade of that same view. And that covers everything we wanted to present today, but we've since made divisions to the design since the DRC, and we'd be happy to discuss those in detail with some imagery, supporting imagery as well, if you guys would like to go into that. But that completes my presentation.
Would it be appropriate to see those images now, or?
If you guys would like. Oh, I have it up, so we can go over it right now if you'd like.
Okay.
Just as a, I'll just remind the EPC that, you know, these are things that the applicant team hasn't, has been working on, but have not been subject to any review by city staff or the DRC. So it may be useful for EPC to see these things to get a sense for some of the direction that the applicant is taking the feedback that we've provided, but again, please bear in mind that these are works in progress that have not gotten thorough review by staff.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Shapiro. Okay, so then, yeah, let's, let's see what you have to show us. Mr. Harrison?
Yes, thank you. So these are, this package that I'm about to present shows our responses to the DRC comments. There are very good comments, and we feel that the design has actually been improved significantly from them. So I'll go through view by view and just show some of these rough draft views of some of the comments that we received. Some of them were to create more verticality, to create more of a unique feature at this corner. Another one was to differentiate the decks between the west and the east side, consider alternate material, materiality at the retail along here, and you'll see zoomed-in views of all of these as we go through, emphasizing the pedestrian scale and this two-story volume. And then using round clad columns to differentiate the massing and reinforce the diagram of the, of this vertical piece coming down along the retail facade. The corner decks provide more transparency by removing planters, carry the clear glazing up, and then concrete deck edges to differentiate the deck edges from the feature band that goes around the project. So here you can see we've added this, this element to create more verticality to that corner, since it's the gateway. We've entered, we've brought in more of this pedestrian scale elements just to bring down that two-story volume for people who are walking through here. We've changed the material of the retail, which you'll see momentarily, and differentiated the decks by using concrete and made it more transparent so that you can see through. It's also differentiated from the decks on the east side as well, as well as the introduction of an art piece. And Landscape is currently working through opening up this landscaping area along here as noted previously. Here you can see the materiality of the facade and the request to change it. Same thing with the pedestrian scale here. As you switch over, you could, this is actually an expanded metal aluminum material now, and we've introduced some of these canopies to really bring the scale down in that two-story volume. Another comment that was, that was good is just that the differentiation between this retail facade and this retail facade and the idea of maybe bringing some of that around the corner, getting rid of this obtrusive vertical element to really separate this retail from the structure. So, and then also emphasize a contrasting shape for the form, something a little bit more playful. So what we've done is we've actually created a butterfly roof, which you'll see better in another view. We've brought that retail facade to poke through this wood two-story lobby element that goes through the promenade. And then another, another comment was to create more differentiation along this facade with these punched openings, as well as removing the vertical element here to highlight the jewel box retail. And then this shows the butterfly roof to create that contrasting playful shape. And then you'll see in another view, but we've created more differentiation with the punch openings along here. So here's a before view with that vertical element and the original shape of the jewel box. And here you can see the more playful shape and the removal of the vertical element, which does really open up that, that gateway into the promenade. Another comment was to push this glass line back to really bring in, like we did on the other side, to really bring in that activity zone and widen that corridor between the buildings, and then also to introduce a higher-end material along the back of house areas, which the back of house areas actually mirrors the back of house areas of the building adjacent existing. That way we can limit the impact of loading and back of house on the overall site. So here you can see how we set that back and really created a more generous pedestrian scale or pedestrian experience along here, as well as higher-end materials by bringing that wood feature element that was occurring in the promenade gateway around the corner. And so this was before, feels a little bit tight, and then after it really opens that up and provides some protection as well. And so that concludes my presentation.
Okay, thanks very much. Those help a lot. All right, let's go back then to, to the commission, and let's, let's go through the drill about where we talk about who visited the site and who has spoken in advance to the applicant. So can, can we just go down through the list? I did visit the site, but I have not talked to the applicant. Other commissioners, please raise your hand and I'll call on you. Commissioner Haymeyer?
Like the chair, I've also visited the site, but have not met with the applicant.
Commissioner Lo, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Schmeesing?
Same.
Okay, Commissioner Yen?
I'm the same as well.
All right, and did I get everybody?
I've seen the site, but I haven't spoke with the applicant, Chair Cox.
All right. So I think that's everyone, right? Okay, so having done the disclosures, since this is a study session, we will then take it back for public comment and then come back to the EPC for questions and discussions. So would any member of the public on the line like to provide comment on this item? If so, please click the raise hand button in Zoom or press star nine on your phone. Phone users can mute and unmute themselves with star six. The EPC Clerk Haran will start the timer and let you know when your time is up. EPC Clerk Haran, are there any members of the public wishing to address us on this item?
I'm seeing one person. How long on the clock would you like me to set it?
Make it three minutes, please.
Hey there, can you hear me?
Yep.
Awesome. Okay, so, hi, everyone. I'm paying, she, her, hers, and I'm a Mountain View resident. So thank you so much to city staff, commissioners, and applicants for working on this project. I actually grew up near the Sears store, so I've always been really excited about the continued building of the San Antonio Village Center. So I was reading the report, and the presentation was really inspiring, actually, and I thought a lot about the, this corner lot of San Antonio and California Street, as well as the future nearby development. So I think about the impact on current community members and future pedestrians, shoppers, workers, residents. For this project, I particularly like the warmer tones and the planters with the plants on each floor. That's really cool. I'm wondering if we could explore having more green infrastructure elements through the architectural design as well as the building materials. Particularly for the architectural design, I think green elements may soften or offer texture to especially the monolithic boxy aspects, and definitely welcome activity at the ground floor. I think another thing is I'm interested in this project's use of carbon-neutral building materials and wonder if there's opportunity in planning and building this project for botanical walkways, vertical gardens, green walls, green roofs, that'd be great, and just adding, you know, continuous native landscaping along the property line and seeing that there's any space for community pedestrian gathering and seating options. So I do see the greenery in the pictures, and I think I saw, you know, some mention of it in the project plans, but I'd really like to echo the emphasis on the attention to more trees and landscaping moving forward. Just really quickly, you know, native plants and large climate-appropriate Um, just really quickly, you know, native plants and large climate appropriate trees, um, I think could make the ground floor and separation between the structures really lively and inviting. Uh, these natural elements are, well, they're natural assets and they give us the benefits of calmer streets, noise buffering, you know, I think that's going to be important for future residents nearby, um, storm water management and more. So overall, my reflection about, um, just the community character and amount of view in the realization of San Antonio center, I think connected patches of, you know, larger canopy, native landscaping could be mentally calming, help with noise buffering, natural beauty, and pretty much increase the connectivity to the nearby greenness of the San Antonio overpass and the adjacent residential neighborhood. And I think that's all my notes. Thanks for the opportunity to speak.
All right, thank you for addressing us on this item. All right, let's then now take, if there are no other members of the public wishing to address this, is that right, clerk Coran?
There's nobody else.
Okay, then I will take it, uh, back to the commission for, uh, questions and discussions. Are there any, let's start with, uh, questions. Are there any questions for staff or the applicant from the commission? Raise your hand, please.
I.
Commissioner Haymeyer?
I wonder if we could just have either the applicant or staff walk us through the circulation to the underground parking. I, I know that was touched on briefly, but I appreciate seeing that.
If the applicant has a plan that can show that.
Yeah, David, can you pull that up?
Thank you.
While he's pulling that up, I'll, I'll offer a verbal description. When we built the sub train, the four levels of sub train parking under office buildings one and two, we actually provided for what they're called knockouts at the end of the parking, uh, aisles in the subterranean parking decks in phase two, so that we didn't have to provide a ramp and use up valuable ground space in a future phase, phase three, such that the subterranean parking levels on all four floors just connect by extended parking lanes or parking drive aisles, uh, through the project. And that David can probably show you how that works and play it. David? There you go.
All right, so, uh, basically when you, you ramp down and into the garage, um, through here, so this comes off of silicon and you come down through the parking garage and you come down around. And then you can keep going up and around as you go up the, the very, as you go down the various levels. Um, but you can, you also enter, there's already, uh, knockout panels existing, um, in the project, so we'd knock those out. This was all planned for this third phase previously. And then that's, that's exactly, that's essentially how you enter the garage.
I'm sorry, are you saying that, I just want to make sure I understand. So vehicles enter through the existing garage, the construction elements are already integrated so that there is, um, flow between the two garages. So the entrance, there is no entrance on the new project, it's all through the existing?
Correct, so, uh, the entrance comes in along silicon and then you dip down under the below, the existing below grade parking. And then you go through where these knockout panels were already designed in place for the existing building, uh, because this, this garage was actually already planned previously. So then you keep going down and it's this, it, it happens the same way. You can actually, when you go down the ramp, you can actually take an immediate left and enter the garage as you go to the lower floors. So it's really convenient and quick.
So you're, you're correct, Commissioner, uh, you, uh, consider the garage on the, the adjacent of this building and then each level of the garage is accessible from, um, that same level in the existing development. Yeah, just like so.
Thank you, that's very helpful. And, and maybe if I can ask, um, probably obvious follow-up questions, just as we're looking at a large-scale office development, but maybe the developer can comment a little bit if, if your plans are in any way changing because of the pandemic or, um, if there are modifications. Like, I know we're really focused on, um, landscaping, design elements and parking, but if there's anything kind of changing or you're thinking about those projects?
Well, we, we continue to design for people to get out of these buildings and, uh, be able to hang out outside, whether that's just dining or during breaks. And, and part of that is, is with the agreement we have for our conditions on the previous phase where the tenants can't subsidize more than half of the meals served to tenants, to incentivize them to go out and use, uh, the restaurants, uh, and outdoor spaces in the rest of the center. And so we continue to provide for these outdoor gathering areas and access and connections to the other outdoor areas to promote, uh, the people in the building to, to get out and use those outdoor spaces. As far as the tenants themselves, um, we've been hearing, although we haven't seen it yet because no one's back to work yet, um, but the tenants are looking to, uh, increase the square footage provided for each occupant. In other words, uh, typically, uh, a tech tenant, like our Facebook tenant there now, we have provide you on so many square feet per, for, uh, occupant. And what we've heard is that they're looking strongly to not only to promote hoteling, which is people can come and work flexible hours at maybe shared facilities, but also just more square foot per employee, um, in future design. And that's what we've heard from, from the.
Yeah, and I, and I think the other thing that we're, we're doing on our project is we have a lot of those setback floors with lots of balconies. You know, we have so many balconies on this project, it almost feels more like a residential project the way it looks. And that's on purpose, that's so that we can have that indoor-outdoor connection up on the buildings and into the workplace as well, because we know that the access to fresh air is a key component. And it's not just in response to the current conditions, it's a, it's a response to provide healthier buildings long-term. So we're looking, you know, at this as an opportunity to do the right thing, um, as we go down the road.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's go back here. Commissioner Kaprilis?
I just wanted to know if the, um, applicant had considered the lessons learned from phase one and phase two, particularly with pedestrian and bicycle, uh, flow through, through the project. Uh, we gave feedback in prior years of the inaccessibility of both the pedestrian and the bicycles through this project. And there was nothing that was ever corrected to make it a lot easier for pedestrians and bikes to go through this, um, you know, this project. And it is, it is huge and I think that is, uh, certainly a challenge to, uh, look at that and to take that into serious consideration, even modifying the existing, uh, uh, pedestrian and bike that is already existing in phase one and phase two. We didn't see any of that, we requested that from phase one and phase two. And I just wanted to make sure that that was some lessons learned in that you would incorporate that into this design. I'm not seeing that right now and I'm, I'm a bit disappointed to be really honest with you. So I don't know if you've, uh, talked about that in any detail, uh, but would like to publicly request that, uh, that be a big consideration. Thank you.
Okay, let's see. Um, did you want to respond to, uh, Commissioner's, uh, comment?
Sure, this is Dave Geiser again. Um, we did work with, with staff, but based on comments regarding bike and pedestrian access and, and thought that we had made great strides in providing not only shares, um, wide bike paths, not only on Piccetti, but also, uh, around the park. Um, as far as pedestrian access, the installation of the pedestrian, uh, crossing signals, we did all on the busy intersections, not only where you can cross, um, Fayette, uh, but also at the intersection between, between the residential and the park itself. Um, identifying crosswalks with, uh, the colored enhanced paving at those intersections with crosswalks and pedestrian signs. So we, we, we did pay attention and, and we did make modifications to our phase two plans in, in reference to, um, you know, comments made from phase one. Um, for, for this current phase, we're, we're certainly interested in promoting pedestrian connectivity and safety, especially bicycle safety as well. Um, we provided the bicycle lockers and the bike racks to again promote that kind of activity. We have bike lockers, uh, uh, bike lockers down in the parking levels and showers to promote, uh, bike, people biking to work and using altered transportation. By the way, which they do, a lot of people take their bikes on Caltrain to come to the Facebook facility and use our bike lockers and showers that we provided in the ground floor. So while, while we will certainly endeavor and, and, and take your cue to do more and look at doing more and working with staff to promote that, I just want to let you know that, that does not, it's not an afterthought for us. And it's something that we work with Urban ORE and our landscape architects to try to incorporate, you know, where best possible. And, and, and we'll continue to strive to do that and, and pledge to you that we, we will take a very hard look at, at what we can do more. And if we're not doing it, we'll look to do more, uh, in this next phase.
Okay. Thank you. Are there other commissioners that have, uh, questions? I see Commissioner Lo.
Um, yeah, I have a couple of questions. One is, um, perhaps this is for staff. Whether, um, you have any numbers on the job housing balance in the San Antonio Precise Plan area itself? I know, um, in the question and answer document you have provided, uh, some great numbers on the residential units that are completed and under construction. But I'm just wondering overall, in terms of job housing, how does it look?
We don't have a specific, uh, job housing ratio in this area that I'm aware of, that we're keeping track of. And Rebecca Shapiro may be able to speak more to that. Um, we have not exceeded the maximum office, even if this project does move forward, we will not exceed the maximum office allowed in the San Antonio area. Um, and as, as noted in the responses to questions, we have approved and have currently under construction, a good number of residential units, almost to the maximum, studied in the EIR for the San Antonio Precise Plan. So while the precise plan could allow for additional units, the assumed maximum, um, at the time of the EIR is already under construction or close to it. Um, so we've seen a lot of growth in the area, we don't have a specific ratio, um, that I'm aware of, but there has been a good amount of office under the cap and a good amount of residential as well, um, as far as what was initially assumed.
Okay, um, Commissioner Schmeesing?
You didn't have any more questions, Commissioner Lo, correct?
Why don't you go ahead and then come back to my other question?
Um, I actually was along the lines of the housing jobs linkage. Um, I was wondering, and maybe especially with COVID, you don't have an estimate on this, but how many additional jobs you anticipate this development, housing? How many more workers?
I'll let the applicant speak to what they're anticipating leasing, um, to be as far as employees per square foot that they were mentioning earlier.
Dale, maybe you can answer that, what you typically find.
Well, I, I, I think that, um, you know, if you look back on what the typical, uh, tech type of user uses, it's probably a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy-five square feet per person, probably closer to a hundred and seventy-five, which is traditionally a little bit more dense than what we used to see back in the day when it was two hundred, two fifty. The question is, what is it going to be post-pandemic? And, and as Dave alluded to, what we're seeing is that we're probably going to end up with more of a hybrid work environment where some percentage of the, um, office population will work from home for some percentage of the days. We will see people needing to come back into the office. So we could see, uh, that a hundred and seventy-five square feet per person grow, but I, I, my gut tells me it's going to be about the same because we're going to have more square foot per person that's on site, but less people on site every day. So I think that's going to come out somewhat balance each other. So, um, I don't remember, we call exactly the square footage, David, how do you divide by a hundred and seventy-five?
I can chime in. So it's at a hundred and sixty-seven-ish thousand square feet, a hundred and fifty per person is, is based on the California building code. We'd end up with one thousand, one hundred and sixteen people. Now, whether they go with the code or maybe there's less people because of COVID.
It's likely closer to one seventy-five because one fifty's pretty dense, so do the math at one seventy-five.
Sure, give me one second.
And that would be consistent with what we're seeing with Facebook in office buildings one and two currently. Uh, there's, there's probably just over two thousand employees there currently. So at about another thousand employees makes, makes sense for, uh, the total development. And then obviously more workers, you know, we've got, uh, fifteen or so thousand square feet of ground floor retail. Um, and depending on the use, uh, and intensity of the use, whether it be, uh, straight retail or accommodation of restaurant, the, the, the number of jobs, uh, or the people employed there will vary on you.
And just the office, um, set at one seventy-five, um, it gets us nine hundred and fifty-six employees.
That's not right.
Thank you. Um, you were just, um, commenting on the retail and I know this has come up in just a couple of meetings and developments in the past, concerns with, um, especially now the feasibility of, of retail. Um, and if there's any plan B or, um, I did have a chance to look at, um, the staff response and it does seem like, um, although there are some open spaces within the complex, that those were planning to be leased pre-COVID, but, um, whether to staff or to the applicant, is there a plan B if for whatever re- reason real retail isn't looking feasible?
Brett, do you, can you, uh, unmute and give us your thoughts on that?
Um, yeah, um, guys, first off, thank you, uh, for having us tonight. Um, uh, my name is Brett Christopoulos. I've been in charge of the, uh, leasing this project for the last three years. And to kind of give you a quick little background as to where, where we started, where we've been, where we're going pre-COVID and where we're starting to go now, um, giving a little background during that time. When I first started working on this project for Malone Geyer, um, we were in a process where, um, LinkedIn, which was the original office tenant, um, was in transition, um, of sublacing their space. And we were without an office tenant at the same time, too. The Hyatt Centric was about a year delayed in their development. And, um, so we got to, uh, um, so w- w- while we were going through that initial phase of getting people up and going, we, uh, w- w- we started to really get our stride of leasing within the last, uh, um, now, which it feels like it was only twelve months ago, really eighteen months ago. Uh, we, we at the time signed about seven leases, um, and had another, um, probably about five or six going through letter of intent after that. Um, since COVID, we've also lost some of those tenants with, uh, that were in signed leases and within letter of intent. Um, and still do have a handful of tenants that are actually strong best category tenants moving forward at the asset right now. Um, I, I think just like anything else, um, you know, with, with the, with the horizon of a, um, vaccine and, um, and as people are starting to learn how to handle this, uh, COVID, COVID environment, um, we've actually seen a number of people start to come and start to thaw out, um, and, and start to relook at the project again. So, you know, we're, we're actually very, very bullish on where the future of this is going to go. Uh, but unfortunately went through a, uh, a massive roadblock slash, uh, speed bump like, uh, everybody else has been going through. So, um, you know, a- a- when it pertains to any other type of uses, um, and the precise plan is very, uh, very strict onto the type of uses we could do on the, on the ground floor and, and, um, uh, but right now we, we've been focused on our merchandising plan, which we think has very strong legs and, and, yep.
Thank you. Um, and then last, I, it's a question. Um, I biked, I bike commute to work and my route used to take me through or around, um, this area. And, um, I will say, I will say it's very tough, tough to bike through. Um, and I was wondering if there was any possibility of like protected bike lanes. I, looking at the amount of space between the buildings, I'm assuming that probably would be not feasible. Um, and this could also, um, trail into the discussion as well. Um, but wanted to see what thoughts were on that.
I don't, I don't think there's room for protected bike ways, although where that might be, where that might be possible, we could certainly look at it is, is along Piccetti and, and may, maybe, and I, I. And maybe, maybe Rebecca, you remember, you're the one who wrote this, but I believe that Pecetti was envisioned in the future to have bike lanes on either side as well. And perhaps that is a less trafficked and probably more appropriate street to look at for enhancements for bicycle transportation. So we'd more than happy to look at that. At least the half was half the street that we own, but certainly in conjunction with our neighbors and with any new development, especially given that the use is supposed to be a school, we'd be happy to look at a future enhancement.
Just a little bit more information. As far as the public streets around this site are concerned, the long-term strategy for the precise plan is to see protected bikeways on California Street and showers. Unfortunately, there's not, even though it is very wide, given where bike capacity needs, there's not adequate space for protected bikeways on San Antonio. And there is sort of limited opportunity to do so on the existing internal streets of the Village at San Antonio. The curb-to-curb distances are generally the minimum required by fire code for truck And so any other sort of protected bikeway would only be able to be accomplished if we did some sort of different shared configuration with the public sidewalk areas as far as the existing condition is concerned there.
Thank you. Yeah, just a dream of mine, well-protected bike lanes.
Definitely. And it is part of the future vision for the area. It just, it's going to have to be in targeted locations.
Thank you. That's it for me.
Okay, then we'll take it back to Commissioner Lo.
Thank you. Yeah, I have a couple of other questions. One is, I guess piggybacking on what Commissioner Schmiesing had talked about, I want to ask more about the right-of-way on California, San Antonio, and the promenade. So according to the staff's response, there's some, some of the right-of-way on these streets are lower than what the precise plan calls for. I did note that the right-of-way on Promenade is wider than what the plan calls for. And I was just curious as to why that part of the right-of-way was able to be so generous and not the other, not on the other streets.
So the right-of-way as measured in the San Antonio Precise Plan is often measured from face of building to face of building. So it includes private property, public walkways, the vehicle roadways, and everything in between from building to building. And specifically on promenade, across promenade from this project site is a large plaza in front of the theater. So because it's building facade to building facade, that huge pedestrian plaza is included in that right-of-way area. So that would be why that right-of-way is so great, because it's including that plaza area. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you. So I am a little disappointed that the setbacks and the right-of-ways on California and San Antonio, which are two very main streets, are lower than what the precise plan calls for because it does, you know, diminish the pedestrian experience in terms of the, you know, the space they have on these two such busy streets. Does the applicant have any comments on that?
Well, I wanted to note that our project, over the course of development, we've given up over between five and six feet, I believe, on San Antonio Road to accommodate the bike lane on San Antonio Road and acted to accommodate the bike lane on both sides of San Antonio Road, which is an improvement we did during Phase One. And during the Phase Two project, we gave up another five to six feet on California to make room for the protected bikeway on California that fronts our property. So we've given up frontage for bike accessibility. And one of the reasons we're actually pulling our building back at the ground floor is to provide for more pedestrian, a more pedestrian-friendly environment along the frontages of San Antonio Road and California. So we're doing our best to provide for that friendly pedestrian experience along those two busy streets, but we've already given up roadway for bike, as part of Phase Two, we gave up frontages on both streets for bicycle, for bike lanes. And I should note, too, that part of our design was to provide for strong pedestrian connectivity along the east side of our building with this drill box and the outdoor gathering areas and amenity spaces along there. Not only do we have a generous bifurcated sidewalk along the promenade, but we provide additional pedestrian amenity areas under the cover of the building, as David and Daryl pointed out, along the promenade. And again, the idea was we're going to hold the building back quite generously from the promenade, so again, just to enhance pedestrian experience along the promenade and the connectivity to the plaza across the Silicon Way.
Yeah, I appreciate these, what you just described, the design elements along the promenade. I guess my main concern was along San Antonio and California. I don't know if staff has any additional comments on that?
This site definitely has constraints as far as the location of the building envelope. So the applicant has been working with us extensively, as they mentioned, to make sure that there is enough space for both landscaping, separated sidewalks, and amenity areas along California and San Antonio Road, and that the details of which staff is confident we can continue to work through. But because this project was authorized with the 150,000 square feet of TDRs through the LASD TDR program, and that is a council priority, fitting this much square footage on this site is, it has, causes constraints, right? You have to either go up or go out. So if the project is to use all the square footage that they're authorized to use and purchase all that square footage so the money can go to LASD for building the school, then if there were to be increased setbacks here, the trade-off would have to be a taller building. And so that's a difficult balance that staff has been working through, applicant on here. But we've definitely placed a priority on making sure that there's a comfortable pedestrian area along all sides of the building.
David, could you put that back up again? Just wanted to point out something that if you look at that plan, we are actually increasing, as David had mentioned, we're increasing the amount of perceived right-of-way at the ground plane, because if you look at the building on the right with the pop-out kind of all the way to the right, we set our building in significantly from that. And you look at the building below us to the south, we've set our ground floor in from that building as well. So we're making improvements on what's existing out there with this new building.
It's also important to note that there are constraints in order to get enough parking as well, and the way that the structure needs to be laid out for parking, that also gives us some constraints to note.
But it does, others on the top deck, because that's why we're pulling our ground floor in to really address Commissioner Lo's concern, which is to give as much more back to the public ground from a pedestrian perspective as possible.
Great.
Thank you for the thoughts and efforts that you all have put in it. But yeah, it's definitely a very important issue for, I think, all the residents in the neighborhood. And then I wanted to also address the Ms. Lee's comments during the public comments period, that she's hoping to see more urban greening in this area to make sure public health is promoted for everybody's benefit. So related to that, I wanted to ask about open space. Because this area is so dense, you know, obviously, it's very important to have open space. And I really appreciate the thoughts on having a lot of balconies so that employees can have access to fresh air and can be outside having news and whatnot. I'm wondering how much of the, how much, what's the total square footage of the publicly accessible open space is the project providing?
I'll let Bryce or Keith chime in here. They ran some calculations on that for us.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have to unmute, Keith. Well, there it is.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll speak to it in Keith's absence. Seventy-four percent total public space area on the ground floor, I believe. I might be getting that wrong.
Keith can try.
Are you able to hear me now?
Yeah, yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, sorry about that. I was wasn't finding the correct buttons there. Yes, that's correct, David. Those numbers there indicate what's going on with the open space.
So there's, as you can see, there's a generous public amenity exterior space along the outside of the building.
Yeah, not only did we pull the building back from the right-of-way to give more public space on our property, but we have this breezeway, if you will, that connects California with the promenade, and all that has opened the public. There's an outdoor plaza out here in the front of the drill box, and there's a second public seating area south of the drill box. So for a congested site, there's quite a bit of public area. David, are you able to go to sheets like, I believe it's 4.1? Well, before you go, before you go there, let's just look at the sheet for a minute. So the other thing that we've done, as you can see in the purple areas, is we've actually brought those decks and outdoor spaces and landscaped areas all the way up the building. So each floor has some level of deck with additional greenery going up the building. So it has been a very much of a concern that we've thought about, and we believe that's something that the tenants are going to drive and demand in the future. So we've really integrated those green spaces, not only to the public on the ground floor, but up the building as well.
And what do you plan to, in terms of the green elements, what do you plan to plant in the upper levels?
We've got, you know, a lot of them are, its main concern is keeping them drought tolerant, but we've also got a lot of flowering plants. We're also looking for plants that would spill over the sides. And when you get to the upper levels, we've got some, where we've got the space for the trees, we've got some flowering crepe myrtles at the top, which are also drought tolerant. Just trying to provide a lot of interest on those, on those many levels.
Right. So the top level, you're planning to plant some crepe myrtles, I assume that's at the top level, right, in planters?
Yes.
Well, level six and seven.
Yeah, level six.
Okay. So I hope you'll be able to use pretty generous planters for those trees so they can grow to a decent size.
Oh, yes, they're quite large.
Uh huh, yeah. Unfortunately, they can't grow all that big in planters.
Yeah, that's where we mound the dirt. We have a planter above the deck, but then we also mound the dirt up so there's room for the root.
Okay, great.
Yeah, we definitely count. And we also place the trees over existing column grid intersections, just so that weight can be carried.
Yeah, because you're going to need a lot of soil for them to be healthy.
Yeah, we've gone down that road.
The reason I was wanting to go to this sheet is because of the sections at the bottom there. It shows that how, you know, we're meeting the guidelines for the setbacks with the six-foot planter area from the face of curb, and there's an eight-foot pedestrian zone. But then at the ground level, there's also the setback for the, before you get to the building, there's a quite generous active space.
Where does the underground parking end in that diagram?
Back goes, back goes up to the edge of the public access, even.
Yeah, I can show that in the architectural sections if you'd like to view it.
Yeah, I just want to make sure the.
Yeah, there you go.
Right. So, okay.
Yeah, there won't be trees and planters on those. Those are in terra firma, the trees out here.
Right. Yeah, now that you've mentioned trees, I would really encourage you to make sure the trees have, you know, the structure of soil and all that, so that their roots can really be healthy and strong.
Absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely. The ones in the right-of-way are planted on native grade.
Yeah, that'd be great.
And they're doing well.
Yeah, for the street trees, we're matching the existing. On all sides, Silicon Way will be matching what's on the opposite side, and on California, San Antonio are matching the existing ones.
Oh, actually, Silicon Way, is that above parking? The parking goes through, right?
Yeah, that's correct. And we have box planters to support that.
Okay, so again, you're using large planters for the street trees here.
Correct.
Correct.
And will there be, will there be street trees on both sides of Silicon Way or not?
Yes, there's existing trees on the south side already.
Which are also existing over a parking structure.
Yeah. How are those trees doing in planters?
Oh, they're thriving.
Yeah, they're doing very well.
The backfill mix, it's a special backfill mix that goes in those, and it's fantastic for the trees. It's a special blend.
That's great. That's it for now for me. Thank you.
Bring back to Commissioner Haymeyer.
I just want to follow up on one of the questions that Commissioner Lo surfaced. Going back to the open space percentages on the ground floor, I wonder if the developer can comment a little bit about the utilization of that in Phases One and Two. I just think this project is a little bit different because it is such a key corner. And I know there's that wonderful installation about the history of Silicon Valley on San Antonio Road, but my limited sample size of visits to the site suggests that at least on the San Antonio side, it is not currently, Phase Two is not currently well-trafficked by pedestrians, but maybe you have more data than what I've seen from when I happen to be there.
So are you looking for actual percentages of open space?
No, of utilization of that open space. I just wonder if you have any sense, right? I mean, it's great to say something, I think it says 74%. I can't. Yeah, 74% of the ground floor you're anticipating is open space, but it's a really busy corner is my point, right? So if the 74%, it seems like a really big number. I just don't know the intersection of San Antonio and California, if that would have, you know, less utilization than the open space and pedestrian areas that you were describing, you were touting earlier in Phases One and Two.
Well, we are, we are planning the utilization. You see, we have private outdoor dining on San Antonio Road that is protected via planter from the roadway traffic. We see the doorways to the retail on California also happening off the sidewalk, which is why we have that generous outdoor area for pedestrian traffic there as well. But in terms of actually, aside from the outdoor dining area on San Antonio, the reason why we've located most of our activated and pedestrian areas and plazas is off of the main street, off of the promenade. And that's why that's located on that side of the building. We see that activated and used, definitely because it's connected not only to the office lobby, but also connected to the promenade and connected to the plaza across the street. And so we certainly see activity off the promenade side, especially with the theater across the street, too, and ground floor retail. So even though we have very generous pedestrian activity areas on the roadway side, we're thinking that the more highly used areas will be on the east side of the building off the promenade. we're thinking that the more highly used areas will be on the east side of the building off the promenade.
And so you're saying that pre-COVID, when the theater was open, you saw that those areas being, being utilized? Wow.
Absolutely. In fact, the, unfortunately, it is pretty quiet over there now with the theater closed and, and Facebook employees working from home, there, there is not a lot of foot traffic, period. It's, it's pretty quiet over there. But when the theater was open and Facebook was open, there was definitely, the, the traffic areas were definitely in front of the theater along the promenade. And certainly during the day, the plaza was actually fairly busy with employees coming out to have their lunch. If they get their lunch or they go get their lunch in the center, then they, they come out to the tables and chairs and the fountain and eat lunch outside in the promenade. And that was, that's, and we just think that's simply going to be further enhanced once we get the retail at least across the street and, and the people back in the building. And this is also why the hotel located there, they have an outdoor dining area outside of Fairchild's, their, their restaurant inside their hotel. And, and that's, that's quite well used as well, or was when they were, when they had more guests. But when they were in full swing, it was a very active area, not only with the drop off at the hotel, but also with that outdoor area. So the promenade, we think is, not only is there generous areas and opportunities for outdoor dining and activation, but, but we see just further enhancement of this promenade with what we're trying to achieve here in phase three.
Do you have other questions, Commissioner Haymeyer?
Yeah.
Can we go back to the regular view so I can see the participants again? All right, Commissioner Yan.
Does someone have the unmuted sign they can hold up?
Pardon me, sorry about that. Where are the jewel boxes near the promenade? And I can see that there's public access all the way around it. And I was just curious, the entrance to the jewel box retail, where is that?
Well, it'll be largely, Dara, I'll let you take this and David, it's going to be largely dependent on what the tenant is and how many tenants there are. The, the space is large enough to actually house with fifteen hundred square feet. Typically, these smaller tenants that we find, like a florist or newspaper vending or coffee or a juice place, they don't need fifteen hundred square feet to operate there. So as you can see where the door locations are on the, both the north and south side, we can see this easily being two separate tenants. So we both are.
Okay, okay. I was just curious, because are those stairs going down on the, let's say, west side of the jewel box? So between the, the exits?
There is, there's a grade change between the lower south side and the north side of the street. And so we have both ramps and steps. There's about three steps in order to transition that grade change.
Okay, so I was just a little bit concerned that perhaps that area wasn't as usable because of it. And also there's no access from the building out to it. And I like the idea a lot of the jewel box retail, the newer imagery that you showed, taking away sort of the vertical stake that hammers it down into the ground. I appreciate now that it's more of a clear-cut jewel box. I'm just thinking of the practicality of the usage around it.
Well, we've designed each area, the one at, at California as an outdoor living room. So it has a very high access with outdoor seating and outdoor congregation right out here. And then we designed the second area off the promenade for another outdoor seating area. So those activate the two entries to the, to the commercial retail. And the rest is a bit of a pass-through. It's, it's a circulation space to get from the street into the promenade.
Okay, okay. I understand what you're saying.
That's not to say, though, if we had a retail tenant that needed more outdoor space for whether it be dining or seating, we would extend those areas and we could relocate stairs to enlarge those areas around the sides of the building to provide for additional outdoor area. It's, this is really going to be a tenant-driven decision.
Got it. Okay, I understand. I just want to make sure there's, we're utilizing every square foot of open space to the best possible, in the best possible way that we can.
Absolutely.
And I just wanted, noting how much it is, how much space it is, it's very generous. Given what the uses are next to it and, and the grade change, I just wanted to ensure we're making use of it, that people will actually use it. Because in my mind, I'm thinking those people, if they're not going to the retail jewel box, they're out on the promenade. So most of the foot traffic is going to be on the outside of the jewel box towards the street, less going between the building and the jewel box itself.
I, I think that's a good point.
Yeah, so I was just, you know, curious about that, all that square footage going to just, you know, anyone exiting the building to the jewel box. And then I noticed it's, it's the emergency stair and so no one's even leaving the building.
There's no, there's no activation on, if you go back to the plan, that is the emergency stair. So the retail tenant is on the, is on the north side and they have an ample access to that courtyard. And on the south side is the building lobby coming into the main.
We'd be happy to take a look at that area and see if we can dedicate more to actually activated area.
Great, thanks. Let's see, I was going to say that a lot of the changes that the DRC had recommended was what I was thinking as well. And I'm glad to see that you guys moved in that direction. But the other thing is you don't have the imagery yet because you don't have time to work on it. But I am a little bit concerned about the planters and how that affects circulation in and around all these areas. The other point that I was going to make is when I visited the site, I was a little bit concerned about Silicon Way. I know it's back of the house and so not nearly as important. So I understand why there's not a lot of room given over there. But just in looking where the existing building is and how much room there is, given that we're going to add like maybe almost six-foot planters, it seemed like a very narrow sidewalk. And I think I read somewhere in the staff report that we're still thinking that there will be a lot of pedestrian traffic. I'm glad to see that you guys pushed the face of the ground floor back a little, but I believe there's still columns in the way. So the effective walking aisle is, how much do you know? Between the planter, so like the narrowest point of walking, maybe between a column and a planter. Do you, do you know about how wide that is?
David, I'm going to guess that's about seven feet, but I'm not sure.
Probably.
Let me, I can measure it really quick. An important point is those columns, unfortunately, due to the, the parking structure, the columns will have to remain, but we can reduce their diameter. But let me, let me take a measurement for you there.
It'll feel much better. Yeah, just even in the image you showed, I know it'll feel much better and much more open. I was just wondering what the effective walkway aisle width would be.
Well, and I'll, I'll figure that out. The other thing we've done is we've made a concerted effort to actually place these above-grade planters and pots and the pedestrian light poles in between the pedestrian walkway and the roadway to help provide a sense, you know, more of a sense of security to the pedestrians. So even though the, it's not just full sidewalk between there, the idea was to provide some, at least a perceived sense of safety as you walk next to a roadway.
Sure, and it's a tiny roadway. I don't imagine anyone's going super fast either. I just wanted to make sure that there was, it was a comfortable feel because the building is so tall.
Seven and a half, seven and a half feet, I think is the.
Yes, seven and a half feet.
Okay, no, that's, that's, that's decent. Okay, thank you. And I guess I, I'm just looking towards what the landscaping plan will be next. I know you haven't had time to look at it, but I had the same concerns at the corner of San Antonio in California. You know, as it's shown now, it just, you know, you're providing very tiny bit of entrance to that corner. And it, it's the corner that we're trying to make prominent, even enassing.
That was a point that the DRC brought up as well and we're still working on how that corner is going to work to provide not only the, the landscaping needs, but they had the same comments, it felt a little constricted. And we're working on revised plans to figure out how to open that up a little bit more. And again, we're talking about adding artwork here and, and, and working with the planners to try to come up with a better solution. And so we're still working on that.
And, and, and we would, we would open it up completely, except we've got a little bit of challenges with grades and how the grades meet the flat part, which is the inner side and the sloping, natural sloping sidewalk on the outside. So we're, we're working through that. We'll, we'll come up with a better solution.
Okay, because I, I do see that there are some steps that are needed to get down.
That's correct. And down here, it's flat on Calif, on San Antonio, it's, it's flat. On California, there's some steps. So there's some ups and downs. So we'll, we'll work through that and, and open this up as much as we can.
Yeah, and we, we thought it was critical to have a continuous accessibility path all the way around, around the perimeter. So that's putting some other constraints on, on where we can put planters.
Okay, okay. Yeah, and you know, I'm all for planters, more greenery. Yeah, again, I'm just going to reiterate where the planters are, how they're designed greatly affects how it feels. So I guess you can just push your.
Agreed.
A little to.
Definitely agree that, with that.
Yeah. And, and again, same thing. I think the DRC, you mentioned earlier that you were going to take a look at this as well, is the corner of California and the promenade and that it should all feel more open. And by defining that corner with a big, huge planter, I'm not saying don't have a planter, just how it's configured, it, it's actually closing off all the beautiful public access way that you've given over from the promenade. So it's breaking it up and so it feels more like corridors instead of an open plaza. You know what I mean?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much. That's it for now.
See, let's go back to the participant view. Looks like a follow-up question from Commissioner Kaprilis.
Yes, just to tag on to what Commissioner Yan was saying. You mentioned, the applicant mentioned that they were considering some kind of sculpture and some kind of artwork. Because it is a gateway, I'm wondering if you've considered exactly where the prior location was before you purchased it. There's a historical value to that area from a Mountain View perspective. One of the buildings that was purchased actually was the Shockley Lab. And that was really where the silicon chip was originated. And so I'm wondering if you've considered, you know, when you, when you look at what you might want to add there to make it more welcoming, if you would include that type of historical significance. We're, you know, we're, we've always been very proud from a Mountain View perspective that that's really where the silicon chip originated and thus the Silicon Valley. And often that is, you know, overlooked. And I'm wondering if you've taken that into consideration in this overall design with all the exceptions that you've requested from the San Antonio precise plan. I'm wondering if you would consider that, including that as well.
The answer is yes. We actually, where the former Shockley Lab was on San Antonio Road is exactly where all of our monumentation and artwork is located. So there, there's great monumentation artwork already on San Antonio Road at the exact location of where the Shockley Labs stood. So, so, so we have spent a lot of time and effort in, in preserving and creating that monumentation and recognition from the IEEE and others' plaques in the ground commemorating that as well. What we had talked about doing with the DRC is actually providing, again, so by the way, so that's the existing picture of the, of the artwork of the original transistors that were developed on-site there. And that's actually out on San Antonio Road. And, and so we would be more than happy to continue that theme around of the corner of San Antonio and California. In fact, that's somewhat, we proposed it. Is there something of the scale enassing that we might be able to do at that corner? You can see, we, for just, for the size and scale, and you can see further down to your right there where that existing monumentation is and where the Shockley Lab was. What we talked about doing was doing something complementary, not matching, but complementary to again commemorate the events of the site at 391 San Antonio Road in that location. So it needs to be developed, but I completely agree that, that that is, that that is an appropriate solution to do there at that corner.
Yeah, because even though it is, you know, it is the, the village as you have named it, I think that because of the significance of it, we want to, you know, have that in a very prominent area. So we'd appreciate your consideration of that. Thank you.
Commissioner Lo.
Thank you, Chair. I had a quick clarification question on sheet L102 that the applicant showed earlier. I wanted to clarify the number seventy-four percent. I don't think it represents that seventy, seventy-four percent of the ground level is open space rather than.
It's, it doesn't.
Correct. Could you, just for the record, explain what that number is?
Steve?
Okay, okay, that's, of the, let me just get to the total public open space. I'm sorry, can you, can you ask the question again?
Well, yeah, she, she wanted to know what the, what the sixteen thousand is. And so.
The sixteen thousand is the total public open space. That's, that's area not covered by building. So of the area not covered by building, two thousand five hundred and forty-two square feet is planted. There is the area that's kind of indicated in the magenta is the private open space. That's that outdoor dining along San Antonio Road. And then, but what's usable, public open space is the, kind of, it's kind of got a blue color, a blue tone to it. And that's seventy-four percent of that ground level space within the, within the property line. That's the building.
So it's tall, it's the total public space minus the planted area equals your seventy-four percent is actually public open space. So it's twelve thousand feet. Twelve thousand feet is public open space on the ground floor.
Yeah, I, because earlier the seventy-five, seventy-four percent was, I think, represented slightly differently. I just wanted to clarify the public's record.
We acknowledge that seventy-four percent of the site area is not open space. No.
Yes, exactly. Thank you. That's all.
We'll clarify that too moving forward. We'll make, we'll try to represent that better.
Okay, seeing no hands up, I just have a few remaining questions. No one's asked about the specifics of the parking yet, so I'll take that one. The first question is back to staff. Is there any necessity or to study how the additional traffic that is going to go through the circulation to get into this project affects the overall traffic in the vicinity? Or is that believed to be kind of like, not going to be significant enough that it merits any study?
The traffic, a traffic study will be completed for this project. We've just contracted a consultant to begin that study. And because the state and the city recently adopted new traffic regulations as far as studying BMT, we'll also be studying that as well for this project.
And if I can jump in one, one second to respond to Commissioner Lo. Just for clarification, the open area is forty percent of, if you're looking at it from building outline to open space, it's forty percent. So in contrast to the seventy-four percent, which is a different number for something else. So just to clarify that. Forty percent, no problem.
Okay, I'm going to ask a follow-up question. That forty percent of what?
Forty percent of the lot. So yeah, that's not considered building area. So that includes planters, open seating, et cetera.
Okay. All right. Another follow-up question, this one for the applicant. So it sounds like you already have a tenant. So it sounds like you already have a tenant for the office building or negotiation?
No, we don't.
Oh, you don't? Okay.
Not, we have a lot of interest, but we don't have a lease done yet.
Okay, I understand. And then another, another question, I'm trying to understand, you know, how this fits in with, you know, other parts of Merlot and Guyer Phase Two in particular. The, there's a large open area right now, I mean, I guess, which was envisioned as a retail space of some sort that is facing out onto California, a little bit to the east of this. But before you get to the movie theater. And, you know, I mean, in some of the diagrams that we saw from Merlot and Guyer Phase Two, you know, there was the idea that there would be some village market in there. But I'm just wondering, you know, I know that you've had some challenges in leasing space out due to COVID and also due to delays in the construction of various parts of the project. But can you give me an idea of what your current thinking about what's going in there? What kind of use?
Brett?
Uh, yes, you know, looking, looking at that space, that space is kind of unique in the fact that it has high ceiling heights. There's the inch, there's the roll up doors, there's a potential outside area behind the space over there. And we've looked at a number of different uses. Ultimately, where that space sits in the project, what's intriguing about the space is there's both the option for interior entrance into the actual parking garage into the space or exterior. And so, you know, what we've always looked at that space is some kind of potentially either capstone restaurant space that would be a little bit more of a public gathering area. You know, we've gone down the path of looking at different types of markets or, or smaller groups that, you know, pre-COVID, we're looking at things like, you know, how would you put it? The, the market hall type, type uses that would kind of fit back there. You know, I, I think that space is going to, you know, potentially evolve. You know, we've, we've looked at it for potential of a fitness to engage the inside outside as well too, to take advantage of how that space is sit situated. But, you know, one of the things with this type of projects that we've kind of, you know, I, I've seen working on these projects for over fifteen years is that, you know, really they kind of evolve organically. And, you know, we've got some strategic spaces in Phase Two that we've really focused on corners to kind of bring traffic to the project. That's kind of one of those things that, you know, the best analogy I have is that, you know, these projects aren't, you put them down on a piece of paper and everybody rushes in. It's more the lines of, you craft a small snowball and kind of slowly work it down the hill. And, and everyone turns back around in a period of time and goes, wow, that thing is a massive snowball coming down the hill. And what a great project. But they kind of forgot the first beginning part of that kind of curating the asset to get to that next phase. So that's, that's why we kind of envisioned to get into that space, but what we kind of visioned the space to be also as well. If that makes sense.
Yep. Another question, just, you know, thinking back on Merlot and Guyer Phase Two. I mean, you know, we had talked about with respect to the parking garage, that, you know, that there be some creative way of screening the parking garage. And I think, you know, when I go, when I go by there, I see that, you know, you have kind of like the, the wavy metal pattern, you know, that's there. But at one point we had talked about, you know, having some greenery in there. And I'm just wondering whether or not, you know, what was it that caused, you know, that not to happen? Was it just that it wasn't really that doable a proposal or it was because of the drought? Or it was, you know, just something else? You know, going forward, just wondering, you know, about those kinds of ideas, whether.
We, we went back and forth with many options, as Rebecca probably remembers. We had a lot of different options we looked at for screen of that structure. And we landed on the thin design as something that was not only unique, but it offered different views during the time of day. And it seemed very almost kinetic, the way the shadows played on it. And it was always, it was interesting to look at. And we think ultimately did a really good job of screening the parking structure for as large as it was. We, we did look at some green options earlier. I don't think they were rejected for any reason besides we thought that the thin concept was just superior. And, and, and we're, to be quite honest, we're quite happy with the way it turned out in terms of the functionality that it does and what it achieved. So I don't think it was discarded, I don't think greenery was discarded for any other reason that we just thought that the current design was superior.
Okay. Let's see. And just one overall question in terms of the whole process here. It seems like this, for the footprint of this project, it's consuming a lot of, I mean, it, it sounds like it's a very, there are a lot of challenges, let's put it that way, in terms of, you know, getting it exactly right. And I'm, you know, I mean, because it's going through a number of iterations with the DRC. Went through several sessions of council and, you know, it's coming back early to I was as a study session. And I'm just wondering from the developer's perspective, what has been the most challenging thing for you in terms of putting together a feasible project here?
I think the most difficult so far has been trying to, is everyone seemed to have a different design idea on what this building should look like. And trying to coalesce all those different opinions into a design that everyone is pleased with has probably been one of our biggest challenges. Working with materiality and with Gensler, and then they've been excellent. And listening to everyone's opinions and comments and working with the planning staff and DRC. But honestly, our biggest challenge to date has been trying to, and what I think we're meeting is, is trying to provide a high level of design that meets the expectation of everyone in the city of Mountain View. We're going to get there, but I think that's been one of our greatest challenges.
Okay. That's it for my questions. Do commissioners have any other questions before we make our final comments for this study session? All right. Then I'll take it back to the commission for any final statement on the project at this point. We're not taking a vote. It's not a public hearing. But if anyone wants to summarize what they think in general, what they think are the most important feedbacks to the developer and staff, this is a good time to do that now. Please raise your hand. Maybe most, oh, there we go. Commissioner Schmeesing.
I can kick off. Um, I, I thought, I mean, thank you so much for your time this evening presenting this to us. I personally would love to see just kind of continued work with the DRC and with council and with all the different stakeholders, making this project as pedestrian and bicycle friendly as possible. I will be really interested to see the TDM analysis as it kind of comes together as the project moves along, looking at how many vehicle trips are anticipated to be generated and what that traffic will look like in the surrounding area in terms of, right, the space itself. I am no, I'm not an expert, but any green greenery that can, can be included. And I thought that at some point art installations came up. And I thought, think that where art is done well in buildings, it can be really attractive and really enhance the area for pedestrians and for people, people on the ground level. So that would be another consideration. Let's see. Yeah, I mean, I think just continued looking at how this project will fit in. I know it's quite a bit taller than the surrounding buildings. In my head, I have a difficult time like envisioning, right, if this project, I believe it's just over a hundred feet in comparison with maybe a sixty foot building next to it or an eighty foot building next to it, right, how that transition will work. Yeah, those are some of my kind of disjointed thoughts, but thanks for the very thorough explanation and willingness to problem solve with us on a variety of the different points we brought up. And one last plug for those protected bike lanes, if it's at all possible within the development. And excited to see Mountain View moving forward with that in the surrounding streets.
Sure, Yan.
Uh, thank you, yes, for giving this presentation. I appreciate a lot of what you guys have done and that you're willing to work with DRC and everyone else to try to gain what everyone is pushing for. I know it's a challenging site. I understand with the, with Alto School District, TDR, it makes it all the more challenging to try to get the extra square footage in. And understanding that challenge, I am still a little bit disappointed that we can't get some of the setbacks up at the higher levels. But I understand why. I just, it's, it's just a little bit, you know, still disappointing. But given that it is a corner building, I can see the exception a bit. It's a, it's a prominent corner, and if it is a little bit taller, it's, it's okay on my end personally. I will reiterate that how all the planters and greenery in the open space is designed will greatly affect how it's used. It's, you know, same as designing the building. It's just outdoor space. And so that design is, is key, I think, to the usability of all that public space. And because we're trying to create a more walkable, bikeable place, I think we just need to spend extra effort in the design of those things and making it such. I don't know if it's possible to keep the same level as the sidewalk. We discussed earlier how there's a step down on California. And I know that's a challenge too, when you're, you're trying to gain accessibility all the way around the building. But you can also do that with ramps and then flat areas, ramps and flat areas. I'm just thinking how to make the walkable pedestrian area along California, the sidewalk, feel as open and connected to the building as possible. Once you do steps down, then you're kind of dividing that public space in half in this two linear corridors. And so that's just one thought. I don't know if it's doable. I'm just putting it out there. I do like the warmer colors, the warm feel and tone. I know it's sometimes a trick, I don't want to say trick, but it's, it's a, when you're doing drawings to green it up and sometimes green is exaggerated to showcase what it will look like in real life. I just want to make sure that the greenery really is going to be there and will be visible and doable and maintained over time, the, the life of the building, if there is greenery shown. And that's it on my end for now. Thank you.
Other commissioners. Commissioner Hamer.
And why I appreciate being able to see this project early on. And it seems like there's already been a lot of really great dialogue between the applicant and staff. And I think part of the reason the developers heard so much discussion tonight is because many of us really do see the village center as a key area in Mountain View. And there's been a lot of disappointment, I think, with the circulation earlier and the earlier phases. And I'm heartened to hear that there's so much thought going into the promenade and the bike pedestrian improvements to make this a vibrant area. And I, I think in terms of the reduced parking, I do appreciate the, and I, I thought I jotted down the term that was used earlier for kind of the advanced build out so that the parking can, structure can be accessible through the existing garage. And I appreciate that connectivity and I think that'll really ease circulation in and out of the project for vehicles. So I am, I am generally in support of a reduced parking, particularly in areas that are so close to transit, like the site. And I think some of the other comments, I, I do appreciate that public comment that was made earlier in terms of, as we're thinking about the, the design elements for the landscaping. I think to the extent that we, the developer can prioritize native landscaping and really looking at green infrastructure elements to the extent possible. I know that there's not a very large site for kind of stormwater capture and those things. But yeah, I think in general, this is heading in the right direction and I appreciate the early view.
Commissioner Lo.
I echo what my fellow commissioners have said earlier. I don't really have much more to add to that, but I appreciate the opportunity for us to provide early input. This is a very important site for the mountain community. So I look forward to the continued collaboration between the developer and city staff and look forward to more improvement in the design so that this, you know, turns out to be a really great addition to our city. Thank you.
And thank you. And Commissioner Kaprilis.
And I, I concur with many of the comments already made by the commissioners, but just wanted to add that because this is such a critical corner and a gateway really into an area of our city, we're asking, we're asking a lot actually. So we're asking for your creativity. I think we're asking you to make this a placemaking area for our community. So we'll, we'll encourage people to gather in the area. And so we're asking of that. And I think that's why all of the greenery request and have it to be the colors and have it be very comfortable and welcoming. And so that's a huge demand. So I think seeing this in the study portion of the proposals has been really good. And I think going back to the DRC and, you know, with the staff's help, I look forward to seeing what the next steps will be. I think that the, the heights and, and the, you know, exceptions in this sort of thing are, are some that are really hard to give back to you after we have been working on the San Antonio Precise Plan and looking for what we envisioned would be a very excellent gathering place for the community and really in a place where we needed that because it was not there before. So I think we're asking a lot. I think this is why you're, you're seeing we want protected bike lanes and we want an open green area and we want, you know, setbacks and this sort of thing. It's, it's a lot to ask. So appreciate your creativity and your working with the DRC and the staff to bring us back with your most excellent efforts to make this something that we'll all be proud of.
Thank you. And I'll, I'll end that part of the discussion with a few comments of my own. Yes, I concur with my fellow commissioners that I'm generally favorable toward the project. It provides the, the TRDs that we need to provide a SD school in Mountain View on this property. And so I understand that with that come challenges. And I'm very encouraged with what I perceive to be a, a positive collaborative working relationship between staff, the DRC and the applicant on this project. I was very concerned when I first saw the staff report because the last time I had seen a staff report like that, it was on a project where, I mean, it basically came down to the applicant is saying this and staff is saying this. Okay, you guys, you choose. And I'm real glad to see that's not what's happening here. You know, I mean, this is, this is a positive collaborative experience. And I mean, you know, there's an openness and a creativity on the part of the developer to respond to what we as a community want, what staff understands is good. we as a community want, what staff understands is good and what the DRC understands is aesthetic. So, you know, I'm very happy about that. The, the biggest concern that I have is about whether or not the actual vision that we had for, um, uh, Merlot and Geyer Phase Two, I mean, is going to get, uh, finally built. And, um, realized, I guess is a better way of putting it. I mean, there's been a lot of bumps along the way. I mean, you know, before COVID, um, I, you know, I discussed with staff in, uh, the meeting that I had before this one about, um, what it was that, um, was keeping that from happening, uh, pre-COVID. And what the feedback I got was that they had talked to the developer and the developer had said, well, you know, there was a delay in, in some of the building and because of that, that with the construction still going on, it wasn't as easy to lease everything up all at the same time. And then, and then COVID hit and, you know, I mean, that, that changed everything in a dramatic way. Uh, and so, I mean, you know, I went down to the site on Sunday and it was like, you know, I, walking around, you know, a lot of outdoor furniture. Um, one guy that looked like maybe he was homeless, you know, eating a chicken dinner out of a plastic container was the only soul there. And I think that doesn't say about the planning of the project. That says about what COVID is doing to things now. So, I mean, you know, my hope is still that we get back to the realization of what it was that was in the diagrams. We see, you know, people using the outdoor areas. We see, you know, community, we see collaboration. You know, we, we see an area that people want to come to walk bicycle or drive to. And, you know, and, and the key thing is when Gray Star is done at the end of 2022. I mean, you know, this is going to be one of the key places that people in Mountain View want to be. And also since it's been a regional center, uh, for retail, you know, throughout the area that it continues to be that. Um, you know, we brought in, when this whole thing started, the phase two, we brought in a special consultant, I, and that consultant talked about the idea of placemaking. And, you know, I mean, I think a lot of things have been done on the project up to this point to, to help, you know, achieve that. You know, particularly and to my heart is the silicon structure that you guys put up. You know, I mean, when my, um, when my cousin came here to visit from Wisconsin, you know, she had asked me, well, what's notable about Mountain View that you want to show me? I've got a few hours. And one of the things I absolutely included was coming down and she took a picture of, you know, herself standing in front of the silicon structure. And, you know, put it out on Facebook and said, hey, all you Facebook friends, I'm out in front of Facebook at the, at the Facebook, uh, you know, I mean sculpture here. So, I mean, you know, that's the kind of thing that, you know, I mean, like, you know, you're making a site that, I mean, you know, is on the par with, you know, the Android sculptures up by Google. Or, you know, or the, the finger up, you know, at Facebook and Menlo Park. That makes it a, makes it a place that, you know, people from outside, but also people in the community can come and, and enjoy. So keep that vision in mind as we go forward. And in two years, I'm hoping, you know, I'll be one of those people who's also sitting there and spending a lot of time enjoying it. Um, and a key thing to being able to do that is ground floor retail. Me, you know, I mean, I, I'm always nervous about it because of the bad experiences that I've had in downtown Mountain View. Um, when I worked on development projects, uh, you know, as hosting them as the vice chair of our neighborhood association. Two projects in particular, Bryant Park Plaza and the Cora Building, you know, had were promised as going to be centers of, uh, ground floor retail and community building. And they didn't turn out as that at all. And I really wouldn't want that to happen here either. So, so anyway, uh, on the parking, yeah, I mean, if, you know, if, if you do the right studies and diligence, I think that can work out uh, fine. But I think when, I won't be on the commission when that comes back, but, you know, I, 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 um, I ask you, uh, the other members of the commission to pick up that role if, uh, parkings are, you know, that I've done during the eight years that I've been here. So I have only one more question back to staff. There were two staff questions that you had. I don't know if you've received enough feedback from us, you know, or would you like us to go around and ask, answer them explicitly?
Why don't I go ahead and just summarize what I've heard, um, and in responsible questions. And then if I've missed anything, then we can go from there and add that contribution. And so in general, I've heard from pretty much everybody that the EPC is supportive of the DRC and staff comments. Um, with the addition, um, from several EPC numbers that we'd like to work further on circulation for pedestrians and bikes, um, not just through San Antonio projects, but interest in improvements on the road, public highways if possible. Um, it's definitely a special focus on landscaping, placement of planters and things like that, which was covered in the, the staff report by DRC comments. But, um, we'll definitely double down, um, on review of that. Um, emphasis on the critical corner artwork. We've heard from several people that we'd like to, um, uh, look into historically significant artwork, um, at that corner and showcase the history of the site and area in Mountain View. Um, and then I also heard that, um, there aren't any issues with the proposed parking plan. But obviously EPC wants all the appropriate studies done, um, and justification to back up the parking reduction. I believe that's a basic summary of what I've heard. Um, if I've missed anything, if anyone had anything additional to add, uh, now would be a good time to do that.
I see Commissioner Kaprilis with her hand up. Uh, you're on mute. Commissioner Kaprilis, you're on mute.
I'd like to get further clarification of, of the exceptions that have been requested from the, you know, San Antonio Precise Plan. I think there, you know, is there any, uh, negotiable wiggle room there? I understand that the TDR, um, seems to be forefront in the negotiations here. And, uh, you know, we, we wanted to make sure what, what are the, what are our options with, um, accommodating that? Do we have any or are we just, you know, is that a foregone, foregone conclusion? So just wanted to know how we have any negotiable options at all on, on the exceptions that have been requested. So I know we're in a study sessions and it's kind of early on to, um, really make, have any answers to that, but I would like to just make a public concern that I would like to make sure that we address that as well.
Yes, and definitely where we can take that into account especially, uh, is understanding areas of interest to the EPC. So it seems that there's a lot of focus on California and San Antonio and concerns over the setbacks there that might be decreased from the quantitative or qualitative standards in the precise plan. Um, and while, as you mentioned, there are some limitations and constraints on the site with the TDRs, we will focus our efforts on designing those areas to make sure that they are pedestrian friendly and comfortable. So, um, even if the exact standards may not be able to be met in the end with the height or setbacks or, or such standards, the guidance that you're giving us will allow us to understand where we need to focus our efforts as far as further design efforts. Where it's, you know, the hard line of, of actually moving the building wall or making other modifications that will help address the concerns.
Okay. And, um, one, one last thing. Um, are there any possibilities for public benefits or is the TDR considered a public benefit?
So, um, the city council determined that for the specific TDR square footage, we would not be requesting public benefits for that area. However, the project is subject to public benefits between the base and tier one requests the project is requesting. So essentially this is a tier one project under San Antonio Precise Plan requiring public benefits for that area as being requested. Um, but the TDR square footage, um, won't be used to calculate public benefits. So in short answer, yes, public benefits are expected with this project. Um, and staff will be discussing that with applicant and the applicant is aware of that as well.
Okay. Cause I think the accessibility, uh, to the transit is, is really critical here. And I think we've needed that in this area for some time. So just wanted to, um, kind of make a note in that. Thank you.
Okay. And Commissioner Yama.
Oh, I'll be very brief. This is a quick one and it may be an easy one, I'm hoping. Um, someone had noted, um, trees and the fact that there are some large mature trees on site. Given the design and the underground parking, I know that they cannot be saved. However, if we can move them, relocate them, I have a recommendation, a suggestion to relocate them in the park that is opposite the dog park. It's the entry park, um, into the San Antonio complex. It's just an open green space and I think it would be really nice to put some of those mature trees there. Um, in the summer, it's shady place to sit and it offsets and balances the openness of the dog park. So it's almost like a, you know, I, I wouldn't know what to say.
I can, I can address that comment. That, that open space is above the hetch, hetchy aqueduct. And we had to keep the trees and any structures out of that space.
Oh, really?
Yeah, that's, that's why it's as open as it is.
Yeah, the San Francisco Public Utility Commission, um, governs that, that land area and specifically prohibits the planting of trees, um, within the right of way that the, the, uh, the waterline runs. So, um, it's, um, it's unfortunately a, um, a, a sad constraint on the design of that space.
Yeah, okay. Well, I'm, I'm glad you explained that because it would have been, yeah, an easy thing to change and make 200 times better.
All right. Yeah, I'll make one final comment and that, you know, I, I really like watching the activity in the dog park. And I mean, you know, to me, you know, one of the concerns that I had about, you know, Merlot and Geyer Phase Three was there were, you know, a number of places like around the Safeway and around, you know, the, um, the, uh, restaurants, uh, that were facing or at least on the corner of El Camino in San Antonio. You know, there are places for people to sit out there, but they weren't being used. But the main thing that, that I like about the dog park is I see that it's always being used and it's a, it's a great opportunity for community. So thanks for that idea. All right, Commissioner Lo.
Um, I did not know that, um, that, uh, the dog park, we could not plant trees there. So I'm glad to understand why. So given that, I think it's even more critical to look for more opportunities to bring in more canopy coverage to this area. Uh, it's, it's so dense, the, uh, public health benefits that tree bring as, you know, as far as the ecological and environmental benefits are, you know, so great that, yeah. If we can, if staff can help look at every possibility to add that, it'd be really appreciated. Thank you.
All right. Okay. All right. So then if there are no other comments, I will close this item and thank the applicant and staff members for addressing us tonight and getting our input. All right, so then, yep. Then I will move on now to item number six. Commission staff announcements, updates, requests and committee reports. I believe there is an announcement from Nicole Wright.
Yes, thank you Chair Cox. Um, good evening, everyone. Um, yeah, I just wanted to let the EPC know that actually this evening is, um, my last night sitting with the EPC as council. Um, I'm not going anywhere. I'm still with the city. But we have a new, uh, senior assistant city attorney who joined our office on Monday, actually Sandy Lee. And, um, she's a very experienced municipal law attorney. Um, and she has planning and land use experience and also, um, experience sitting with other planning commissions. And so she is going to be taking over the role as, um, council to the EPC. Um, and she is actually, um, she has been watching the meeting. I see she's been promoted here. So up there she is. I was going to introduce her to you. Um, and let you know that you guys are in very good hands with her beginning on December 2nd. She'll be, she'll be sitting with you guys. And I, I also, um, before actually introducing her there, I just wanted to say that I've very much enjoyed the opportunity, um, of, of sitting with you all. And, um, I've learned a lot and I appreciate the service that you guys do for the community as well. So, um, with that, I see Sandy over there. So I don't, I don't want to put her on the spot or anything. I don't know if she wants to say anything or.
Where is she from?
Yeah. Hi, I just wanted to say hello. Um, and I, I have, um, I'm coming from the city of Palo Alto. Um, and prior to that, I worked for a long period of time for the city of San Jose. And in both cities, um, I worked with the planning department. And I have staffed the planning commission in both cities also. And I'm looking forward to working with, um, this commission. Um, and I, I've been impressed with kind of the, the, the dialogue and the thoughtful questions, um, on this item. And, um, I'm happy to be here on the third day of my time in California. So, thank you.
Thanks Nicole for being as supportive of all of us. We really appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you all.
Thanks Nicole.
Thanks Nicole. Bye for Sandy.
So, moving on, um, Eric, do you have any announcements about our next item?
Uh, well, so yeah, I can talk about next, uh, December 2nd. We do, we do have the retreat scheduled as I said, uh, last time. We're, we're gonna have a little bit of, uh, uh, discussion with our consulting, uh, outside consulting attorney who's kind of a pro with, um, state legislation. Uh, we also kind of have a discussion about just kind of lessons learned from, from past meetings and uh, ways to get the best out of you all and so that you can feel like you're, you're making the difference that you want to make. So, um, that is the goal for that. We also have a very minor item. We have a kind of set of, uh, minor cleanup amendments to the general plan and the zoning map that we're going to bring forward, um, kind of consistency and cleanup stuff. Um, also wanted to announce that, um, council did interview two new EPC members or two applicants for the one seat that, uh, Chair Cox will be vacating turned out from, uh, yesterday. Um, and they indicated their preference for a man named Hank Dempsey, who has a lot of, uh, legislative experience. Um, and so that will become official at an upcoming council meeting, uh, when they will officially appoint him. So, um, both applicants were highly praised by the council and, um, they both had a lot to offer. Um, and so you all get to meet him at an upcoming meeting, obviously. And that's all I have for my announcements.
Well, not all, since I won't be here. Anyway, uh, thank you for that, Eric. Um, are there commissioners who would like to report or make announcements? Uh, Commissioner Haymeyer.
Sure, just one briefly. And I am actually taking a different role at Stanford. And starting in a week, I'm going to be helping the university launch a new Office of Community Engagement, which is focused on a lot of the topics that we and talking about here and land use and planning, but really trying to think about how Stanford can be a more proactive, um, player and bringing students and faculty to local regional issues around sustainability, affordability, healthcare and higher ed. So, um, still very excited to continue the, on the planning commission and hopeful to use some of the ideas we've seen in Mountain View, um, in the region more broadly.
Uh, and yeah, thank you. And any other commissioners wishing to report? All right, I have a few announcements. Um, oh, Commissioner Yan.
Yeah, I'm not reporting. I just didn't realize it was your last day. So.
No, we have still December 2nd.
Okay, that would be your last. Got it. All right.
Okay. So you can, you can save the Hanker Okay. So you can, you can save the hankering tears for. Okay. So here, my announcements are these. I had mentioned before at the November meeting, the Mountain View Historical Association, that our former EPC chair Pam Barrett had, was going to do, and she has done a presentation commemorating the 100th year of women's suffrage and with particular emphasis on California's role in passing the suffrage for women earlier than 1920 and 1911. So I learned some important facts. I mean, you know, one of the things that surprised me in her presentation was that San Francisco was one of the big holdouts against women's suffrage. So, I mean, you know, certainly the city has a much more progressive image now and times have changed. The other thing that happened at that meeting was that Pam was elected the president of the Mountain View Historical Association for a two-year term. And I was reelected as vice president. Nick Perry will serve in an official capacity as past president. That's, that's actually a board member position of the historical association. So we'll have the continuing benefit of his presence there as one of the key historians of Mountain View. I attended a meeting of Liverpool, California last Saturday. There was a very interesting speaker who is a Wall Street Journal reporter and book author. His name was Ryan December and his book is called Underwater and the push to turn single family homes into corporate investments. So, I mean, you know, I think if I get some time over the break, I'm going to pick up a copy and read through it. I mean, he went through a lot of the very interesting changes in terms of, you know, like with, you know, with all that happens, you know, over the internet and consolidation of, of financial instruments and that kind of thing. You know, the idea of, you know, investors buying up and targeting single family homes, you know, for investment and, and leasing opportunities. It's something that wasn't attempted to a great extent in the past because, you know, I mean, the way that he put it was, you know, most developers of large apartment complexes would say, it's enough trouble to try to manage, you know, a few hundred people under one roof. I mean, how would you, why would you want to try to manage a few hundred people under 100 roofs? But actually this has become quite doable, you know, and even, you know, I mean, like the computerized search tools that are used to identify, you know, which markets are, are prime for the investment has, you know, is changing the scope of single family home ownership and renting in the United States. So I, I recommend either getting a hold of the lecture or reading the book. And those are my announcements. And so if there's anything, if there's not anything else, then I think I can go on to item number seven. And I will adjourn the meeting at nine 16 PM until December 2nd, 2020. Thank you all for your attendance and input.